Thank you, over in the city council meeting, the order Monday, October the 17th, 2005, right at 7:05 PM. The invitation this evening was provided by the Reverend George Roncovich from the St. John Episcopal Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Steve Lozner. Would you all please stand?
Let's place ourselves in the presence of our Creator. Almighty God, our Father and Creator, send down upon those who hold office in the city of Homestead the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all your people. And as this community prepares for new elections, guide the people of Homestead in the election of officials and representatives, that by faithful administration and wise laws, the rights of all may be protected, and our community be enabled to fulfill your purposes. All this we ask and pray, in the name of our God, our Father, and Creator. Amen.
Amen.
Please join with me. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father and the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you, Pastor, for coming out this evening, and thank you, Councilman Steve Lozner. Councilman Porter is out this evening. He's out of town, wants to be with us. We'll call Madam Clerk.
Mayor Warren.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bell.
Here.
Councilwoman Garner.
Here.
Councilman Hodge.
Here.
Councilman Lozner.
Here.
Councilwoman Waldman.
Here.
Any additions, deletions, or deferrals? Excuse me, Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry. There is a deferral at 7C of Tab 9, and request deferral until November 7, 2005. That deals with Northwest Moratorium and a waiver for development.
Is that it? Thank you, sir.
That's it, sir.
Special presentations, presentation of the National League of Cities 25 Year Award. Councilman Lozner.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of Councilman Porter, who is the city's representative to the National League of Cities, asked to make this presentation tonight to you, Mayor, and the city, and the council, in recognition of this city's 25 years of active membership in the National League of Cities. It occurred to me, in reading the presentation, that while we are in many respects at the end of the road, we certainly don't operate on our own, and we look to the experience and the experiments of other communities in learning how to build a better community here at home. So the National League of Cities honors the city of Homestead, Florida, for 25 years of membership and dedicated service in shaping and advocating national municipal policy and helping to strengthen and promote communities of all sizes to the city of Homestead. That's the plaque that I guess we'll display in City Hall. Our membership in the National League of Cities.
Thank you, Ms. Lozner. Item 5B is the presentation of safety awards for the month of July, August, September, and October 2005 winners. Councilwoman Waldman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have quite a few in the audience tonight, so I'd like to ask them to come forward, please. This is for the presentation of the safety awards for July and August, September, and October. And in July, we had Omar Young with Electric Utilities. Please come forward. August, Asvaldo Garcia, Public Works, Building Maintenance. We had Richard Pilgrim, but he was unable to attend with the Police Department Code Enforcement. Roberto Badalas, is that correct? September, we had Roberto is with Public Works. In September, we had Felix Domenia. Felix. We had Leonard Cunningham with Utilities, and Felix is with Public Works as well. Ramon Ramirez with Utilities. October, we had Johnny Callaway with Public Works, and Dennis Santiago with Public Works. So, gentlemen, congratulations. You will receive a paid day off, a $25 check from our city attorneys, a City of Homestead safety certificate, a safety badge to wear, a congratulatory letter from the city manager, and your names will be posted on a bulletin board in City Hall.
Thank you. And Miss Pat McLeod from Main Street Organization will come forward and give us an update. Always a pleasure to get an update from Pat.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and Councilors. First of all, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the city and Judy for allowing or enabling myself to go to the small towns downtowns forum last week. It was one of the best that I have ever attended, and I had two companions with me, and I know that they and I came back, and we are very revitalized as to what can be done with tourism in your small-town downtown area. It was very, very enlightening. I also had the pleasure of hearing the mayor speak, and we held our own, I'm sure, with a lot of the cities that were there. I was very impressed with Delaware. They have amazing changes in their downtown area, apparently. And I also had the opportunity to take the West Palm Beach tour, and that city is really booming, and they are spending a lot of money on it. I think the one thing that I would say that came out of the conference or the meeting was that it is essential that city government, CRA, downtown organizations, and local developers and property owners work together to do the job that has to be done. Because one of the best speakers I have ever heard was the speaker at the end of the seminar, someone from New York, and her statement was that the tourist people of today are not the married couples with children. They are the baby, I forget what the term is, what comes after baby boomers, the X-generation, I think it is. And most of those are single, affluent, young people that have college degrees, and really what they're looking for is experience in your small-town downtowns. So I really believe that Homestead should look to seeing what we can do to really speed up what's happening down on Main Street, because everyone has a theater that they've renovated, everyone has a downtown organization, there's not just Main Street, there are other organizations that assist, and it was very, very enlightening. And I know we can do it, there's a lot of energy and stuff with the people that are working, so I'd ask the council support when anything starts to come across your desk that we are looking at, things we're looking at implementing. So thank you again for opportunity to do that. On the events that we're going to be having in October, just so that I gave you all the flyer for the Halloween party, we are going to be partnering with the Association for Retired Citizens, in the spirit of partnership in which I do most of the events downtown. They are going to be assisting us in bringing in the vendors, they will get all the profit that will go to them, and we will just assist them with putting on of this event. There's a street dance for adults, and then there's a children's party from 5 to 8. And they have already got the donations for the prizes from their contacts, so this should be a really good event, so I'd ask anyone that's interested to please support this event. And also today, I had a meeting with the Automobile Association, Antique Automobile Association of Florida, and the state meeting in January, which they had at the end of last year, had decided to take from Homestead, they did not want to do it in Harris Field anymore, but I'm dragging because we had asked them, talked to them, and today I had a meeting, and we signed a memorandum of understanding that that event will now be held on Main Street in January of next year. They anticipate 5,000 people attending that event, so I'd just like you to know that that is going to happen in January. So, thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat, and let me add just a comment to the conference. As Pat mentioned, I was asked to come up and speak on a panel at this conference in Delaware, and I was extremely impressed with the presentation from the mayor from Dunedin, Florida. And I would suggest, Pat, you and the team, and Ms. Waldman, at some point, schedule a visit to Dunedin. I came away with some, just some wonderful ideas on what we can do in the downtown here in the city of Homestead, but we may want to give Dunedin a visit. I was, they're doing so much there, and I think we can come away with some fantastic initiatives for our downtown. One thing in particular was Waldman, they did, they decorated the garbage bin downtown with the history of Dunedin, and they had the local artists to put the history on the big bins in downtown, and I'm told that it was absolutely wonderful. So there's a lot that they're doing, and maybe a city that we may want to emulate some of the initiatives, I think it'd be very, very helpful.
Well, Mayor, I appreciate, I appreciate that you've taken the time to go up there on Thursday. I'm sorry I couldn't make it, it was just been a crazy month for me, but I appreciate the representation of our funds from the Tourism Committee and Pat. It was my pleasure to be able to take that out of my travel budget to give to you so that you could go. Mayor, when I was, I was away this weekend for a funeral, and I happened to go up US-27, and there's a lot of historic downtowns I saw. They're at, I mean, people are so into those kind of cities, those kind of cities that have a downtown, and especially historic. So I think we might need to take a little bus trip or field trip and go visit some of these downtown areas, because you learn, you learn from your sister cities. And I can't wait to sit down and have a meeting this week, possibly beginning of next week, and just hear everything. Dan, you went too, and this is what I've been trying to put forth through the Tourism Committee for so many years, is that we have to learn how to work as a team. And that includes all of the downtown organizations, the city, the CRA, and I know we've been trying to do it, but I think now it's really, we really know how to do it. So it takes time, but we're working on it. And the Seminole Theater as well, we need to work as a team. And I think that you brought back information that was, as Pat touched on, most of these downtown areas either have an amphitheater, or they have a theater, that has been the basis of the revitalization, that's been the stimuli, that's been what's made it happen. So we really need to focus on that. Thank you, Mayor Warren.
And Ms. Waldman, one other comment, the mayor from Dunedin said that they had over 2,000 volunteers in different professions, pretty much retired people. They were so amazing that he had to hire two full-time people just to deal with the volunteers over here. I mean, it was just, it's just amazing what they're doing there, so it'd be interesting to get some more information.
I'll definitely call them tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. Item 6 is the consent agenda, is there motion for approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, is that second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hodge. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Legislative matters, Mr. Attorney.
Please be advised that the following items on the agenda are quasi-judicial in nature. If you'd like to comment on any of these items, please indicate the item number you would like to address when the announcement regarding the quasi-judicial item is made. An opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made available after the applicant and staff have made their presentations on each item. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you do not wish to either be cross-examined or sworn, your testimony will be given its due weight. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but the public may request the council to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. The full agenda packet on each item is hereby entered into the record. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak for the organization. Further details of the quasi-judicial procedures may be obtained from the clerk. According to Code Section 2591, any lobbyist must register before addressing the council on any of the following items. At this time, council members must disclose any ex parte communications concerning items on the agenda. At this time, the clerk will swear on any persons who wish to testify on any quasi-judicial item.
Please stand and raise your right hand. I state your name, hereby swear or affirm that the information I present shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Thank you.
Our first item is a resolution of the city of Homestead, Florida, granting final plat approval for Carmen's Place, located south of the C-103 Canal, north of Southwest 320th Street, Mallory Drive, west of Southwest 152nd Avenue, Kingman Road, and east of Southwest 157th Avenue, Newton Road, as legally described in Exhibit A, known as Pod E within the Oasis Planned Unit Development, 88 single-family units on approximately 21.4 acres of land, and providing for an effective date.
I'll move it, Mayor.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Waldman. Any questions from council?
Just a comment.
Vice Mayor.
This is exactly what we'd like to see more of, single-family homes in density about 4.1 to the acre. So, yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a public hearing, any comments from the audience? Any comments from the audience? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Any final comment from council, we'll call Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Garner.
Yes.
Councilman Hodge.
Yes.
Councilman Lozner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Waldman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bell.
Yes.
Mayor Warren.
Yes.
Motion carries.
A resolution of the city of Homestead, Florida, granting a waiver of plat to Kimco Delaware Inc. for the division of property totaling .76 acres into one lot located in the Homestead Town Square Shopping Plaza on the east side of US-1, and north of Southwest 312th Street, Campbell Drive, as legally described in Exhibit A, and providing for an effective date.
I'll move it.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, is that second?
Second with a question.
Second by Councilwoman Garner with the question. Councilman Garner.
I heard this was going to be a Starbucks, is that true?
No, ma'am, what you have here basically is old housekeeping, the existing parrot trap a cow, and the property land is just being separated legally. This is one that's already there, nothing else has happened with this.
This isn't for the vacant parcel?
No, ma'am.
I heard rumors that Starbucks was coming, and everybody said it must be that parcel there, so just wanted to get back to people.
Starbucks, hopefully Starbucks will eventually land, but right now there's probably at least six or seven places it was supposed to land, but we do hope it lands eventually.
Thank you, Councilwoman Garner. This is a public hearing, any comments from the audience? Any comments from the audience? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Any final comments from council, we'll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Hodge.
Yes.
Councilman Lozner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Waldman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garner.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 7C was deferred. Item 7D is first reading of an ordinance of the city of Homestead, Florida, granting a zoning from G General Use and R4 Hotel Motel District to Planned Unit Development, PUD District, approving an amendment to the Malibu Bay PUD Master Development Plan by adding 10.65 acres of residential use, 102 townhouse units, and 2.83 acres of commercial use, totaling approximately 230.52 acres located southeast of the Florida Turnpike Extension, north of Southwest 312th Street, Campbell Drive, and west of the Waterstone, PUD, as legally described in Exhibit A, and providing for an effective date.
Is there motion for approval?
Move for some comments, Mayor.
Moved by Councilwoman Garner, seconded by Councilman Waldman. Question?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
On this one, this is another one we're doing overall density, because on this particular pod, we have 10, just almost 10 units to the acre, so to get the six, we must be averaging with the whole 230 acres?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the overall density?
According to the numbers that Marty did, it's 5.22 beforehand and 5.37 afterwards.
Right, we're still, but, you know, I understand, we've had the same discussion every time, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Garner.
Thank you. If you look at the property, I think including it in the original master plan makes sense, because there's not much that you can actually do with that property if you don't put it in the master plan. But really, my concerns are Kingman Road and North Canal, I'm sorry, and Campbell Drive. It seems that's going to be where the intersection is, and I know that we've been told by the county that they don't think that a light is necessary until there's more development on Campbell Drive. But I'd like to do what we did with the BJ's Light, and see if the county will let us go ahead and pay for that to be put in, to have a light there, because the intersection of Kingman and Campbell is horrible every morning. I get a lot of complaints about it every day. I sit through it every day, and for the county to tell us there's not enough development on Campbell Drive to put it in yet, I think we should do what we did at BJ's and go ahead and offer to pay for it and have them reimburse us, because we need it. And if this is coming in, it's absolutely necessary.
We'll make that request, that's for want. Better do the research for it.
Mike, will it be part of the infrastructure, transportation, master plan that pending to come very shortly?
This is one of the issues we'll be looking at, Mayor, but Councilman Garner's issue, I think, she brought it to my attention a few days ago, and we're already in contact with the county, and we will push forward the same way we did for BJ's.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? This is a public hearing.
Vice Mayor, may I add one thing, just for everybody's benefit? I realize we're just doing the master plan, but this one, as far as the school board issue, has been resolved in the sense that they have met, they have agreed to a number, they actually have the covenant to allow the number. By the time we give our second reading, it'll all be signed up, and everything will be fine. Just want to make sure we just agree with that one.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, any comments from the audience? If not, I'll close the public hearing, we'll call Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Waldman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bell.
Bell.
Councilwoman Garner.
Yes.
Councilman Hodge.
Yes.
Councilman Lozner.
Yes.
Mayor Warren.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is the second reading and public hearing on an ordinance of the city of Homestead, Florida, amending city code by amending Chapter 28 Utilities or Article 1 in general by creating Section 28-14 Association Approval, Providing for Proof of Condomining Cooperative for Homeowner Association Approval of Tendency Prior to Initiation of Services, New Water, Sewer, or Electric Utility Account, Provided for Inclusion in Code, Severability, and an Effective Date. I'll move it. It's a second reading and public hearing.
Moved by, Mr. Lozner, is that second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilwoman Garner. Question?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I have looked at this and looked at this, and I know I went ahead and went with it the first time, and I do understand that we have a problem in some parts of the community, but I just wanted to express that I am not comfortable with this. I think that we are getting in the middle between homeowners associations and the city of Homestead. I think we're putting ourselves in an arena that we don't belong. I think that because, you know, some homeowners associations, some do have homeowners associations, some don't, it's creating added time, added burden on the city of Homestead Utilities Department. I don't think it should be up to the city of Homestead Utilities Department to be looking at these approvals, to make sure that they got approval from their homeowners association. I do understand we have a problem, I just don't think that this is the proper solution for the problem. And I have looked at it, I've looked at it in reading this, and I'm just not comfortable with this. I don't think it's where the city of Homestead belongs, getting in the middle of a homeowners association issue. So I do think, though, that this could create some future problems for the city rather than solve one, I think it could actually create some. But like I said, I do understand where it came from, I do understand that we do have a problem with, you know, people, you know, with a huge rental community, but I think if that person shows up at City Hall, and they've got their lease, and they've got their proof that they live there, it's not for the city of Homestead to be checking homeowners' documents and making sure and verifying that they got an approval from their homeowners association. I don't think it's an area that we want to get into, and I really am struggling with this, so I cannot support it. Even though I think it's the result of a problem, I think it's reactionary legislation, and we must always be cautious with reactionary legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Lozner.
I don't think this is reactionary at all. I think it's very deliberate and very well thought out. I had more than one homeowner, where people who put out their hard-earned money and make their mortgage payments, and their insurance payments, and their utility payments out of their pocket every month, come to me and expressed to me that their quality of life and their investment was being degraded, they felt, because tendencies were allowed to exist within these newly-developed neighborhoods where the associations were either not yet released to the homeowners, or not up and running properly. And my concern is, is that we protect these young homeowners, they were predominantly young homeowners who had saved and put their money together, and found that their quality of life in their new home, for the most part, the new home, was being degraded by the rental situation. And my concern was that, and, you know, and at the same time, we were hearing that from many of these even established communities, that our hands are tied, our associations aren't turned over to us. Help us. And if this legislation makes homeowners, you know, when people buy into a community, they're given those association documents, and they should be able to rely that the provisions of those documents are enforced. And if we as a city, and I call it kind of a benign involvement, all we're saying is, is that if the city has on file from any association that that particular development requires tenant approval, the person applying for electric, for any kind of utility, must present proof of that approval. We're not getting into association business, we're not mandating whether or not somebody's approved or disapproved. I view it as we're looking after those who have made the investment in this community through homeownership. And, you know, I think we talked about this before, we said, "Let's try it and see what happens." There's been a lot of reactionary letters to the editor from people who don't even live here, who don't know this community, that have talked against it. But I'd like to see us give it a shot and see how it works out, and if it needs to be tweaked, we can come back and tweak it, or we can terminate it. But I'd like to see us go forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Waldman.
Have we identified which associations have this in their docs?
Not at this time.
So we don't have a clue at this point, which associations?
Which associations would participate? No.
The reason I'm asking is, I agree we do need to do something, I just have questions as far as, I'll give an example, with our homeowners' association this month, we didn't have a quorum. Then we tried to have another meeting the next week, and we didn't have a quorum. So the meeting's been postponed, and we're having a meeting in November. So, you know, I just wonder what we're going to do if the association doesn't meet on time, and in the appropriate schedule that they have, and usually they meet once a month, what are we going to do when people rent a house? What are we going to do when people rent a house and they need to get their lights and power turned, I mean, water turned on? Do we have an alternative plan? I just want to ask.
At this point, we don't have a plan of how it's going to operate, and that'll have to be developed if it's, you know, if it's adopted. But we don't have, basically, our involvement was, you bring this slip of paper. If you have it, you get it. If you don't, and your condominium association is registered, then you don't get it.
Excuse me? I'm sorry?
Well, right now, we have that if the condo association is on record of having a tenancy requirement, and you have the sheet from, the approval from the association, that it's okay, that they approved you to rent in their association area, and they bring it to us, and we have that document on record, then we would give them the service. If they didn't, we would tell them to go back to the condo association and obtain that approval.
So you are saying, and they would have to go before the homeowners' association and get, see, this is, this is what's troubling me is that I want to know if this is passed, how, who's going to do the housekeeping? You know, how are we going to do with the, I don't know if Ken Berger's here tonight, but, you know, I want to know who's going to do the housekeeping with the utility department? Who's going to do all this?
Okay, the intent right now is, is really the housekeeping would be limited. You had to have the paper if your condo, your tenancy approval, if your condo association has registered their documents and it's included. It would be up, at this point, it would be up to the person and the condo association to make that happen. That would be a person maybe didn't even go through the association, could come straight in and rent it straight from a person who's not following the rules and come straight in, and they wouldn't have a paper, you know, we'd send it back again.
We used to do this in the villages, but I put a phone call in to the attorney for our association, and he said the reason that we stopped doing this was that it was discriminatory, and that he felt that that was the reason that the villagers stopped doing it. We used to do it. I know we did it in the 80s, and we did it before Hurricane Andrew. But I would like to hear from the city attorney on this because I'm perplexed.
Right, I mean, the way, if the ordinance is adopted, there's no, and the approval is not given, then the approval will not be, then the utility accounts will not be open. That's the way it is. I mean, there's no flexibility here. If the homeowners' association registers with the city, and the city then looks at the documents and sees that the homeowners' association does have the right to approve tenants, then on a going-forward basis, if the tenant, if someone shows up and they do not have the form which we would prepare showing the sign-off from the homeowners' association, then they would not be given utilities, period.
Mr. Mayor? The Vice Mayor?
Well, I think I might be able to clarify.
I would like some answers to this.
But where is it? Is that okay?
I think a big loophole in this, if you will, is that if an association whose documents require rental approval doesn't register with the city, the tenants, prospective tenants, don't have to get or deliver that certificate. So if an association, really, the effect is, if the association's not operating and they don't come register with the city, renters aren't going to have to have that approval. We're not going to police those documents. We're only going to police, if you will, those neighborhoods where the association has come to the city and registered as a required approval neighborhood. So your documents can require approval, but you can still circumvent that. Right, the way the ordinance is set up is reactive. The city is, unless the homeowners' association decides to basically, you might look, this is a service that the city is providing. That's basically what it is. If the homeowners' association decides to access the service, they need then to register, have their documents approved, and after that, we will then require a sign-off from them. If they either, if they don't decide to register for this service, either because they're dysfunctional or because they intentionally don't want to register for the service, then the city will have no part of it. I mean, that's where the discretion is. But once they've registered, then there's no flexibility.
Yeah, I think that's where, I'm sorry, I'd like to respond to Mr. Lozner's question. I think it's very important for the citizens to know because I didn't understand that either. So unless the association registers, unless they take a vote and they decide, they take it upon themselves to decide to register with the city, then we have no jurisdiction over it at all.
Correct.
At this point, do we have any that have showed any interest in this?
Well, we haven't had any associations yet. I think it's still premature until they...
But I mean, they haven't shown any, they didn't see it on the agenda.
We haven't had any information on it.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. First, I do, I do want to compliment Councilman Lozner on the initiative on this, on seeing that we do have a problem with a massive amount of rentals, and this may not, you know, make anybody feel better at this particular time, but a lot of the problem in the rental community will correct itself, and it will correct itself. And I do recognize that we have a problem. I still think the smacks of government meddling in an area that does not belong, and that is reviewing and, I mean, having a homeowners' association registering with the city, then the city has to turn around and take a look and make sure, what happens if one slips by us and we give them their, we turn the electrical on and they move in and we, is it up to us to turn it off? And I think it just puts us in an arena we don't belong. It is not up to the city to be, being the go-between between the homeowners' association and the prospective tenant. I think that there, I think there could be some legal issues here, and, but I do compliment Councilman Lozner, and it's, we very rarely find ourselves on opposite ends of something. That is very true, and I compliment you for the initiative. I just think that very often, because of a problem, we do, we do, we do something that we think is going to correct it, and we could be making, creating problems and adding another level of bureaucracy, and it is, it is our electric utilities that is going to now be bearing the burden of making sure if the homeowners' association has registered with the City of Homestead, the onus is now upon us to check and make sure. I don't think that's where we belong. I don't think that's where we want to go. And I really, like I said, I respect it very much. I just cannot support it. I think that we're opening the door for even more problems in the future.
Richard, are you aware of any prototypes anywhere in the other city with utilities and putting this restriction anywhere?
I'm not. I'm not. We've, this was a...
So there's no test case of any of this?
Not that we're aware of.
Commander?
Thank you. I respect all of your opinions, and there's questions of what could happen, but I look at this as we're trying to help the homeowners' associations empower themselves. If they are active and they're coming and they want to make sure that there aren't unknown renters coming into their community, as in Keys Gate, if you come into Keys Gate, you have to go through orientation. That's the perfect place for them to supply them with this letter. So we need to let the homeowners' association know, and all of the presidents need to get together and decide if it's something that they want to do. And if it comes out that nobody signs up for this and it doesn't seem to be working, it's our code. We can change it. We can take it out. Or if something better comes up, we can change it and make it better. But I think we need to try to help them.
Now, we received a lot of letters, Richard, from housing folks saying that, as I think the Vice Mayor alluded to, potential discriminatory practices, and we'll be right in the middle of it. I'm talking housing specialists and experts in the field because this is new. As you said, there's no prototype out there, so I just want to make sure it passes the smell test, the legal smell test before we implement it. That's key.
Those are my words.
So have we done a poker research to make sure that we get in a legal bind?
Because I never know how the vote's going to go. But I would tell you, because I don't want, because I would just say that it's creative. We were creative in doing this. And so it is a, it's creative, and we wouldn't be on the agenda if we didn't think it was defensible. Whether it ultimately would be upheld, you know, I don't know, but we feel like there is a public purpose and we could mount a defense.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I wanted to make one comment that Councilwoman McGonner said that, you know, and I do recognize that the homeowners' associations have come together, but in those homeowners' documents, they have their own rules. If somebody within that association violates those rules, they have the right to evict that tenant, they have the right to control whatever happens, they have that right. I don't want us getting into a homeowners' association issue. I don't want us being in the middle, and we may not necessarily be in the middle, but we certainly are adding another level of bureaucracy on the city, and we are, we are stepping, maybe not in the middle of the homeowners' association and the tenant, but we certainly are in the fray, and that's not where we belong. And if someone in that, if someone knows that that property is a rental property and they did not come before the homeowners' association, then it's up to that homeowners' association to get with the owner of that property and to serve them properly. It's not up to the city to be in the middle of that.
Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Truly, this council has hardly gone out to those communities and really want to do whatever it takes to help. And like the attorney said, this was a creative alternative to, a way of looking at this and trying to help them in a way that they can keep some type of, some form of control on what's going to inhabit their neighborhoods. Ideally, this would be nice, but there are a lot of questions, and I think all of us have questions that we need to be answered. And based on that, I think, you know, instead of making a decision, and I personally would like to maybe defer this item and get some more answers on whether the associations utilize the services, get some feedback from them, and let the attorneys do a little bit more research, make sure it does meet the smell test, and bring some solid information back to this council so that we can make a fully good and wise decision. I don't want us to make a decision that we may regret later. At the same time, I would like for us to make a decision to assist our community in what needs to be done. Truly, they need to be able to, you know, you live in a community, you want to, you know, control and have, take responsibility for your assets and make sure that your asset is well protected, and I completely understand that. But at the same time, you know, we don't want the city to get in any legal battles later on down the road that, you know, we don't foresee. So I would like to, you know, make a motion to defer this, get more information, you know, get some solid information, and that way, you know, this council can make a better and truly wise decision because there's just too many unanswered questions at this point, and I don't, I think if we make a decision tonight on this, then maybe the decision made could be or could not be the wisest decision. So I would like to get more information on this before we move any further.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Mr. Lozner, you wanted to?
No.
Mr. Hodge, will it be deferred this issue for further?
I'll second, Mr.
The question is, since it's been advertised, if you want it deferred to a time certain or if you just want to defer it and then we'll bring it back when it's...
I do it the second meeting in November.
Time certain.
Time certain, okay. So what would be the, what do we give, 30 days?
November 7 and November 21st.
What would the date be?
November 21st.
Okay. Sorry, Councilman Hodge, would be a motion to defer this, to continue the public hearing in this matter until, what was it, November 20?
1st.
November 21st.
What Richard said.
I will second Councilman Hodge's motion to defer.
Second?
I just want to ask a question. If this is tabled tonight, does that prevent people from being able to give public comments about this issue, or should they, that would be at the end of the meeting if they wanted to say anything?
If this motion passes, it would be the end of the public hearing for tonight. If there's a wish to hear from members of the public, they could either be heard before this motion passes or when this thing comes back, it'll be second reading and they have an opportunity to speak then, but that would be at the discretion of the council.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the full?
Continuance.
We'll call Madam Clerk.
Continuance.
We'll call Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Waldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garner?
Yes.
Councilman Hodge?
Yes.
Councilman Lozner?
Yes.
I didn't see it my way.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It took me two years, and if you can't beat 'em, join 'em.
Mayor, can we just try to make sure that we let the homeowners' associations know what day and what time we're talking about this so that they can come and give us their input?
Yes, I think that's very important, public input.
You don't take away your public input.
November 21st, you said? November 21st.
We have it in keeping.
Well, Mayor, we'll make some contacts with the homeowners' associations and brief them on this.
Clear that.
The date.
Next item is an ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida amending Chapter 14 Historic Preservation. The code of ordinance is providing for new definitions, providing demolition by neglect, establishing provisions relating to historic properties, historic landmarks, historic landmark officer, and archaeological and paleontological sites, establishing provisions for standard and special certificate of appropriateness, creating Article 7 economic hardship, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Is there a motion for first reading of this ordinance?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Hodge is a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilwoman McGonner. Any comments from the council?
Mayor, I'd like someone to speak to this and give us a little bit of, either an explanation or a little bit of a background.
I see the president.
Sophia Beller. I just thought they were ready to do that.
Good.
Sophia Beller, CRA staff, also staff of the Historic Preservation Board. I've asked two of the Historic Preservation Board members to join me tonight. This is Vice Chairman Mary Deal and Chairwoman Yvonne Knoll.
So they're the troublemakers, huh?
They've been working on this for over a year.
Two years.
Two years, is that? Two years, and have done a wonderful job. You know, this ordinance was passed in 1985 and established the Historic Preservation Board based on the county ordinance that mirrored all of that language. It has not been substantially amended since then, and the board felt that it was due time to strengthen the code and compare it to the county code and also to cities such as Coral Gables, which has successfully challenged in court historic preservation cases. And so in working with the attorneys and reviewing section by section of this code, we have this revised code before you tonight. And from the vice chairman's notes, I can speak or if you'd like to. At this point, this has gone before planning and zoning as well with approval at their last meeting. I'm just reading from the vice chairman's notes on the major summary points of the amended code. They designate a city employee as the historic landmark officer and expand those duties. This would continue to be myself. Requires planning and zoning to notify the board of actions affecting designated properties. Requires notice to all relevant city departments of a historic designation. Permits board intervention on demolition orders for designated property, requesting time to consider repairs. Adds definitions of architectural terms, reconstruction, rehabilitation, and restoration. Distinguishes two types of certificates of appropriateness required, a standard and a special. Standard is for regular actions, meeting the guidelines and approval by the board, actions that this landmark officer could approve of. Special certificates are for actions such as demolition, removal, reconstruction, or alteration to a historic site. The new code envisions a historic district and accommodates non-contributing structures in that district. Incorporates the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and the National Guidelines. Permits the board to acquire salvage and archival records at owner expense before granting a special certificate of appropriateness for demolition. Revises economic hardship criteria to require evidence of cost before use of hardship as a factor in issuing certificates or recommending enforcement. Prohibits demolition by neglect enforced by the city code enforcement officers. Increases fines from $250 to $500. Encourages the reconstruction of landmarks destroyed by fire or natural disaster, including reuse of salvaged elements with oversight by a committee of five city departments. Permits the creation of a conservation easement program. Permits limited city tax exemption for the renovation of historic... Permits limited city tax exemption for the renovation of historic property. Encourages eligibility for federal tax incentives and state and federal grants. And takes advantage of state law assessment methods for historic properties. At this point, we're also cooperating with the state certified local government program, which requires a 30-day review of any change to your preservation ordinance, which would mean we would ask that the second reading of this be delayed until November 21st in time to hear back from the state on any needed amendments if there are any. I want to invite, would you like to phone him though?
Come on, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Good evening, council. I'm Yvonne Knowles, Chairman of the Historic Preservation Board. This was a collaborative effort, but the person who really should be speaking to you is our board member who is an attorney who understood this ordinance very clearly. So I'm now going to pass this over to Larry Deal.
Thank you. I'm Larry Deal. I'm licensed to practice law in the state of Pennsylvania, but what I do for a living is rewrite rules and statutes for the insurance forms and practices in many states around the nation. A very dry business, so this was rather fun. Basically, what happened was the ordinance mirrored the city, I'm sorry, the county of Miami-Dade. It had not been updated in over 20 years. In March of 2003, both the City of Coral Gables and the county revised their historic preservation ordinances. This tracks them as a template, and I wanted to give due honor to the city attorney's colleague who rewrote substantial parts of the ordinance. If you have any questions, I could talk about this for hours.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you.
I just want to say I'm proud to have known Larry for many, many years and he is a stickler, sticky on detail. He really, really is. So I know if he and Yvonne had anything to do with this, it's done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Mr. Deal, you and Yvonne, I tell you, that whole board is doing an outstanding job, and I'm so pleased to be paying you a whole lot of money to get.
I'm pleased to cash the check.
Thanks for your time and effort.
Thank you.
Any other comments? This is a public hearing. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the audience? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Any final comments from council? We'll call Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garner?
Yes.
Councilman Hodge?
Yes.
Councilman Lozner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Waldman?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is that included, is included in your motion to continue the second reading until the 21st of November? Is that part of?
Yes, as requested, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Verifying.
Next, we have first reading of an ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida, adopting an update to the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use element by modifying the minimum site size requirement for planned unit developments. Establishing policies that ensure the preservation of significant historical, cultural, and archaeological resources as related to park sites. Establishing policies within the transportation element for Lucy Street, North Canal Drive, Southwest 328th Street interchange off the Homestead extension of the Florida Turnpike at the half. Modifying the future transportation map to designate a portion of North Canal Drive, Lucy Street, Southwest 328th Street to become a major four-lane street. Modifying the conservation element by establishing policies to protect and enhance the natural environment and conserve natural resources. Modifying the recreation and open space element by changing current policies on public land acquisition and preservation, and establishing policies for the preservation of open space and creation of a greenway recreation trail system. Pursuant to the provisions of the Local Government Comprehensive Planning and Land Regulation Act and providing for an effective date.
So moved, Mayor?
Moved by Councilwoman Waldman, second by Councilwoman Garner. Any comments from council?
Question?
Mr. Lozner?
Counselor, we've got a couple of questions out there. If any, you can answer it. There was some text in there about height limitations. Now, was that removing our cap or was that retaining a cap on height limitation? I wasn't really clear on that. I didn't want to be caught in one of those situations where the comp plan was in conflict with definitions in zoning categories.
Yes, in this, in this amendment, we were going to remove the height limit in PMU. And so, as part of this, we're going to keep it status quo as well as removing the increase in lock coverage to 80% and try to implement that during our ear-based amendments where we can provide the data and analysis to show that it will not overdevelop or exceed level of service standards.
So for now, we'd be at the 40% coverage. It was seventy feet or four stories? Is that what the difference was?
Yeah, I believe so.
Otherwise, the sky would have been the limit in what we're calling professional mixed use, and that's one of the components of the Southwest Mass. Is that where that comes from?
Oh, yes, it does.
Okay. The current, the current restriction on height is four?
Four stories.
Four stories?
Seventy feet or four stories.
Does that, does that impact?
We'd have an exception for the hospital.
Okay.
My other question was, and I kind of try to stay out of the shoes of Mr. Porter tonight, do any of these policies in any way create unfunded mandates that would require us, where someone could come in and say, "You're not implementing the policies" and that we should go out as a city and acquire lands for greenways and trails and so forth? Is that the slippery slope we could be going down by adopting that? Or is that just some customary language as a, as a, as a policy of a lawable goal? Or could it be turned against us to require us to acquire properties to accomplish that goal?
No, I think we have a lot of coordination going on here as well as working within existing committed funding sources that we have. So I don't think the policy language you see would drag us into any kind of commitment through our capital improvement program unless the council wanted to make that commitment, obviously. But I think we should accomplish all of this within your current, your current efforts.
We're having a lot of rocks thrown at us lately by others who are, you know, Homestead's the bad guy of development right now, apparently. And I would hate to be faced with one of these lawsuits against whatever it may be or these petitions that are, you know, moving to set aside some of our development requests and allegations being made that we're not following our own comp plan by diligently pursuing the acquisition of these open spaces or greenways or trails, what have you.
Right.
I just would want to be very, very careful that these, that these lawable goals not be turned against us. I, I view these as guideposts and, and, and goals and objectives and not mandates, but I sure, you know, in the environment, so to speak, that we live in now, I would hate to adopt it and have them turned, turned against us. But you're comfortable that that's, is there some risk there that?
I don't think so with the wording that we have.
Okay, I guess I'll win.
Thank you, Mr. Lozner. Any other comments from council? If not, this is a public hearing. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the audience? If not, if not, I'll close the public hearing. Any final comments from council? We'll call Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Garner?
Yes.
Councilman Hodge?
Yes.
Councilman Lozner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Waldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have any public comments at this time? Any public comments? Any public comments are limited to three minutes. Three minutes. You see my clock up there?
First one to run the three-minute dog. Okay. Council members, Mayor, I just wanted to-
Give us the name and address.
My name is Joe Nagy. Yes, I'm the president of Eastlake Homeowners Association. I just wanted to say that over the last couple of weeks with the campaign going and all, everywhere you go, whether it's a donut shop, the hardware stores, or whatever, you hear all kind of negative things. And I just wanted to say that everybody's putting people down about things. I just wanted to say thank you for all the right things you have done over the last two years and with our hospital going and our roads, the money we've been getting and everything. So I just want to say thank you for all the things you've done right.
Thank you. Charles Alderman, 437 Southeast 22nd Drive, Homestead, Florida. Mr. Mayor, this is kind of directed to you, I believe, first actually to Mr. Ivy. How are we progressing on how much the city hall is going to cost us? That would be including land, any parking garages, widening of the streets. We've heard different figures out there. Do you have anything that maybe we could let the people know about what this is actually going to cost the residents of Homestead? It's very, very preliminary. And Mr. Lozner, you may be able to give him an answer. I've assigned him to work and live on-
I'd be happy to tell you where we started and then-
But I couldn't give you, to say, I've heard 20, 25 million, but I couldn't tell you to be honest with you, Mr. Lozner.
Well, apparently, since this campaign season started, the cost has grown from 20 to 35 or 40 million dollars depending on who's talking and when. Let me give you the real-life numbers that Mr. Ivy and the architects and I started out with several months ago. Now, before I say that, I'll couch my, my comments in that we all recognize that the cost of building materials has skyrocketed and is subject to dramatic change overnight. Well, I'll be happy to share with you where we started and where we would like to, to end up in a perfect world. The estimated size of the new city hall is approximately 60,000 square feet. Give you some perspective, I'm told that the new three-story office building immediately south of this site is only 15,000 square feet. That may give you some perspective. We pulled a high number out of the air, you know, based on what we all in our text saw as construction cost for this type of municipal building at $200 per square foot. Even I know with my poor math skills that 60,000 square feet times $200 a square foot is $12 million. We pegged the acquisition cost of the property at about $4 million. That's 16. And to date, those numbers are, are holding pretty firm on the acquisition cost. No matter by what means we acquired them, that $4 million is still a good number. So at $200 a square foot for the building and $4 million to acquire the site, we're at $16 million. In, in most of our early workshops where people had the opportunity to sit in and listen and hear the real story many months ago, the sum of $20 million has been the, the outside benchmark at this point. That's architectural fees, permitting, cost increases, demolition, other site work, and furnishing, and totally equipping and having a turnkey operation for a new city hall at $20 million. Clearly, if our architects, if our architects were selected tonight and they started putting pencil to paper tomorrow, it would be 12 months at least before we would have a permit, permissible or permitted set of plans. And that disregards the timeframe for public input on what the building will look like. And we've mapped out some strategy to clearly have widespread opportunity for the public to have input on what the building will look like. But that's not what you ask. You ask how much it will cost. Our target right now is still 20. I mean, from the get-go in campaign season, it jumped to 25, and the other night out at the Women's Club, it was all of a sudden $35 million. But I talk about those construction delays because clearly, as time goes on and certainly with the effects of, of the rebuilding of the entire Gulf Coast, building materials are unpredictable. I hope I don't eat these words, but it's inconceivable to me that we have that underestimated the cost of that new facility if it happens within a reasonable future.
One of the other things I would like to ask is, it seems to me, since I've been to the site, that parking would be quite small compared to what we have now. Am I right or wrong, or do we plan a parking garage?
Well, you, if, if you weren't in some of the workshops, you missed the fact that the city already owns a substantial piece of property adjacent to the target site, which will be used as, as property. Between, between the target site and the busway, the city acquired property, had property for many years and has recently acquired property, and that's in addition to the parking lot at One Washington Avenue that's already on the books. It's with CRA property that was acquired after Hurricane Andrew. So while it's true that the site itself that we are now targeting has limited parking, that doesn't take into account the satellite sites that we already own that are near or adjacent to the site.
That was an excellent answer. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. And to further add on, you know, we've had discussion on, we're not going to use a penny from tax dollars to build a city on-site. It becomes strictly from land cities, the existing property here, and it doesn't overrun any land monies that we get from the sale of the Parker Commerce. But no tax dollars, no ad valum taxes will be used to build the new city hall. No ad valum taxes will be used to build the new city hall.
What'd you say, Mayor? Maybe you could say it one more time.
And if we do that, then fault Mr. Lozner, not me. But I want to, I want to thank him for, I mean, I think we just, a billion explanation as to what the projected cost would be, and I think it's going to come under the $20 million, to be very honest with you. I think we will do that. All right, thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Before the public leave, I'd like to make an announcement. Some may leave before we get to my business. And I'm not going to take credit for this. It's been a tremendous effort by Kurt Ivy, Mr. Mike Shahada, and the city's financial consultant. But several months ago, as we were preparing for the Moody Services and the, and the Fitch evaluation of our financial situation, and we got the A2 rating, they took a look at our wastewater department and determined from advice from our financial consultant that if the city defeats the existing bond in our wastewater department, that the average city should be getting a reduction in their wastewater monthly bill of 24%. A 24% reduction. Currently, the average wastewater bill is about $29.12. The proposed reduction of $6.97 would result into a new monthly bill of about $22.15, which equates to about a 24% reduction in the average customer wastewater bill. That is a significant reduction for our customers in the wastewater area. So I just wanted to share that with you. And the manager and his staff is proceeding with the defeasment of these, the wastewater bonds about, I think it's about 14 million, about $14 million. A significant reduction. So I just wanted to make that announcement and probably will go into effect in a couple of months.
And, Miss Mayor, we're working with our financial advisor right now in the process of the defeasance of the bonds.
So it is outstanding.
The timeframe, I, I think, Elena, they haven't given us a timeframe, but we're anticipating within, by the end of the year, hopefully, that we'll be there.
Because that was one area. You talk about water, wastewater, it was one area concerned by citizens, and I'm glad that we're finding a way to reduce that real significantly. So I just want to say again, thank you for a good job and really just going through that process for our bond rating. I think it was, it's just, it was very, very effective. So thank you all very much. I just wanted to share that with the public. I know some of you may be leaving. You could sleep good tonight if you get a 24% reduction. Business from the city manager.
Just one item, Mayor, to remind the audience and the viewing public that there will be a candlelight vigil in support of victims of domestic violence. We do this annually. The Homestead Police Department's project, Start Off Smart, will be hosting a candlelight vigil on Wednesday, October 19th, in support of victims of domestic violence. The vigil will take place at Lozner Park on 42 North Chrome Avenue at 7:00 PM and will feature the reading of poems and information on domestic violence. For further information on the candlelight vigil, you can call our SOS department, and that, that number is 305-242-5924. SOS. That's it. Good night.
That's it.
Councilwoman Wallman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to piggyback on what Kurt said. It's so important that we come out and we show respect, and we remember that domestic violence happens every minute of every day. I will be speaking at that particular event, and I encourage all of you to come out Wednesday night. Now, on a good note, I am so excited. I just received a letter from the United States Department of Interior, and our Park-to-Park Project, our trailway from Biscayne National to Everglades National Park, has been selected as one of 18 projects through the Department of Interior. So not only are we number three in priority in the state of Florida with the Department of Interior, now we've been selected as one of their 18 projects, where they will be assisting us with resources for funding, they'll be assisting us with technical advice, administrative advice. I am so excited, and we'll be putting out a press release on this, hopefully, in the next day or two, and hopefully, I'll be able to elaborate more. But it's my dream, so it's something I'm so thrilled to share with you tonight. Some of the projects that are included are projects in South Carolina, and Tennessee, Louisiana, Georgia, Alabama, Mississippi, Memphis, and Homestead. So I'm just really, really thrilled. I can't hardly talk after talking about that, but the next thing I'd like to remind you of is that the Halloween facilities in Homestead, we have our U-Bash, which is Harris Field, October 30th. That event is from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That event does cost $4 for the child to attend. However, there's tons of stuff, they're going to be fed, they're going to have projects, it's just going to be great, 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 great afternoon. Immediately following that is a free event, and that's called Trunk or Treat, and that's for all ages. And all the city departments, they come with their cars, and they decorate their trunks, and they have free candy, and, I mean, they really get into it. And we also encourage any businesses, or it's just anybody that wants to come and park their car, what is it for anybody to participate? Does it cost anything for a business to participate? 25, it's $25 for a business to want to come, and I'd like to see Century 21, and Kies, and everybody just come out there. Because last year, we had so many kids, I mean, I couldn't believe it. Harris Field was just full, and I hope it'll be that way again for this event. I also want to mention what Pat McLeod was talking about, the Main Street Night of Fun at Lozner Park, there's going to be a kids' costume party, this is October 29th, and there's going to be a street dance for the adults, music, prizes. It's always fun when Main Street puts something on, so I want to encourage all of you to go out for that. That's on the 29th. I'd also like to mention that I had the great opportunity to be the guest speaker for American Businesswomen's Association last week, that's why I wasn't at the meeting, and I was able to talk about the city. And everybody was so excited, and Joe Nagin, guess, thank you, buddy, for getting up here and saying that, because so often, all you hear is negative, 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 and there are many positive things going on in this city. It's been my pleasure to be a member of ABWA since 1989, so it was my sisters that I was speaking of, speaking to, but I had a really good time doing that. And speaking of American Businesswomen's Association, they're having an event tomorrow night, it's called Revenge in the Redlands, and it's a night with romance novelist and humorist Cindy Crusiker. She is funny, she is so funny. Many of us have had the opportunity to hear her talk. There's going to be dinner and a book signing, and it's going to be held at the Grove Inn. Tickets are $25 each. If you'd like to go, just get ahold of me, or Sue, or any of our sisters in ABWA, all the money goes to scholarships. So we're very excited about that. We're going to have a lot of fun. I also need to mention that the YMCA Ball is this coming Saturday, the 22nd. I tried my costume on today, to make sure I didn't have any costume malfunctions the night of the event. And it's going to be funny, that's all I can tell you. And I'll close this saying that this is Best Cancer Awareness Month. And please get your mammograms, please have your daughters, your sisters, your wives, your friends, just everybody get together, remind everyone that it is Best Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you. Early detection saves lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wallman. Vice Mayor Bell.
Thank you. This last week, we had Congressman Mario Diaz-Balart put on a press conference, and it was a bill concerning aid to the victims of Hurricane Katrina in the form of agriculture aid. It was a very, very good press conference, it was very, very well attended. Of course, Mario Diaz-Balart once again delivers, not just for Homestead, but for all the South aid community, and I'm very proud of Congressman Mario Diaz-Balart. Also, we must also give accolades to Congresswoman Eliana Ross-Latenin, as she always backs up Congressman Mario Diaz-Balart in his endeavors as well. This, so, we don't realize the hit that our agriculture community took as a result of Hurricane Katrina, but it was huge. And Councilwoman Lozner and I want to add to her to actually take a look at the devastation brought forth by Hurricane Katrina by the ag community, and it was huge. So I'm very, very happy that Congressman Mario Diaz-Balart is sponsoring this federal legislation to bring much-needed aid to the ag community. So I wanted to thank him for that. Also, a few of us on council went to the Investafest, the first United Methodist school is doing, they are increasing and adding a year of a year up until the fifth grade. It was a wonderful, wonderful event, and Mayor Warren and I both got to speak, and it was just very, very well done, and I'm very excited. Pride Homes presented them with a very, very large check, so I was very proud of them as well, and their investment into the community, and I thank them for that. Also, I was at the Military Affairs Golf Tournament, and Susan Niman was the chair, and she did a wonderful, wonderful job, and went to the, did the signing in in the morning, and then went back for the luncheon, and I won a huge, huge orchid basket, so that was a wonderful night. And also, Norman and I both went to the grand opening of United Rentals, and that was a nice event. It's another business in our community that's bringing jobs to the community, so I was very, very pleased about that as well. And I wanted to also mention, the Homestead Community Concert Series is about to begin in December. I've been a member of this concert series for about five years now, and let me tell you something, this is the best bargain ever. This Jewish Italian girl loves a good bargain. And let me tell you, this is a good bargain. You get four beautifully, just beautifully done, very well, well-done concerts for $50 for all four concerts. And if you bring your child or a student, it's $15 for all four concerts. It is just unbelievable. And I really wanted to talk it up. The first concert is Annie Cooney's A Classic Irish Christmas. The second one is Red Hot and Blue. The third one is Moscow Nights, and it's, this is a group from, prize-winning musicians straight from Russia. And then we have the Abaca String Band, the end concert in March. And I have applications up here and at the back table. Please take them, you will not be sorry. And three of the concerts are on Sundays, and the fourth is on a Saturday. So there's really, it just opens the door for very many people to be able to attend without conflicting with so many things on your schedule, which is something I always have to be concerned about. And also, and finally, I was sitting up here, and I'm looking at this calendar, and I see that this is the last council meeting, but I'll be sitting next to Mayor Warren. And so I think he's really going to miss me, because I'm always jabbing him and doing like this, or when someone's talking too long, I'm telling him to make him wrap up. And so I think, really going to miss me, really, I'm really going to miss you. So I moved down there to work Steve Lozner's, but I promise I'll keep my personality. And I just wanted to say thank you very much for electing me as your vice mayor, but my tour is, is vice mayor is up. So I'm moving down there, and next time, I will be here one more time with the community hall, and then I'm down there, so then I get to bother Richard. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Lots of good things happening in our city, lots of good events, and it's because of the people that we have here. And last Friday, the city did a good thing, and gave all the employees a party at lunchtime, and I was happy to stop by and visit and chat with everybody, and they were happy to be appreciated, and we need to do that more often. I also wanted to thank our city staff, because last Monday was the Mayor's Youth Council Citizens Academy. And each of the department heads took time out to come in, talk to all of the students about what they did, talk about government. Mr. Ivey spoke for quite a while about our city and our history, and taught them a lot of things. And then we went out on a field trip and visited the utility plant. Thank you to Chuck over there, who gave us a tour. And then the wastewater plant, which, boy, they complained about the smell the whole time. But thank you to Rick and Julio for giving us the whole tour, and the poop scoop, as we called it. And also, thank you to Sergeant Kent for taking us around the police station. Everybody had a really good time, I think I learned as much as they did. But, you know, we have the best staff, and they were all willing to come in and help out, and meet the students, and make them feel comfortable coming to them, get questions, and I just want you all to know that I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And let me announce while we're on Amanda, Councilwoman Gona's business, that the National Women's Political Caucus of Miami-Dade County will be honoring Councilwoman Gona as a rising star. And this award is presented to woman who is an up-and-coming leader within the political community, who drives the goals and issues of the National Women's Political Caucus. And the award ceremony is on Saturday, the 22nd, this month, at 10:00 AM at Rosales Restaurant in Miami, Florida. So congratulations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to get an update on the comprehensive master plan from DCA, Rick.
The Southwest?
Yes, the Southwest.
I guess the first thing I'd do is ask you a question, besides which specific things are you talking about?
Well, I'm going to say a few words, and then let my attorney and my planner add
things to it, as the case may be. We shipped up the entire package to DCA, they came back, they were happy with it. Unfortunately, at very last minute, the South Florida Regional Planning Commission, I think, council, excuse me, I got the right letters, council decided to object to, they did not like the evacuation plan, or the, I guess basically evacuation plan. And right now, I believe we're going to do a little discussion between, first of all, with the city itself, and then talk with the planning council, see if we can figure exactly what their problem is. DCA has approved it, but again, since the other group is acting as an individual, saying that, you know, they put in the comment that they object, DCA has to look at that objection at this point. One of the things that they objected to is the Southwest Neighborhood Master Plan. It's basically number 11 in that plan. And not to be political with you, sir, I can understand why they're having a problem with that one. That one, to me, is probably one of the best ones in there, because it addresses a problem that's at least 13 or 14 years old. Not creating stuff that doesn't exist, they're helping what's there to move on. Hopefully, we can explain that to them again, and make them understand that. The other ones they've objected to are basically the large-scale amendments, and we have to still explain the same thing to them. We think that we should prevail at this juncture, but I think I probably said too much already, and I'm sure my attorney is next to me, ready to kick me to say that's enough at this point. That's probably the best way I could put it to you, sir.
Okay. Is there any meetings coming up that we may need to know about, that we can get involved in and assist the process?
Not yet, sir, but trust me, you will be one of the first people I call. Seriously. This is one that I believe in very strongly as well, and soon as we get, and again, this is in my terms, get our strategy together, what's the best way to do it? If indeed, there's any addition we can ask from council or yourself, we shall do that. Thank you. You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Mr. Lozner?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we've learned this week that the annexation application for what we call Northwest Area Two, the initial application that we approved just a few weeks ago, and if the county could have picked a worse date, I don't know what it is, but it will be on Tuesday, November 1st, at 9:30 in the morning. So soon to be, Councilwoman Wallman Bell and Councilman Porter are going to have to fill in for the rest of us on that one. We look forward to that one going much more smoothly and quickly than the last application did. I think we broke new ground and blazed the trail with Northwest Area. Warren on that one, so handle it for us. Finally, I just wanted to say that over the weekend, as I was going through my council package, it occurred to me that, this was, in fact, the last council meeting of this term, and it's certainly hard to believe that I've been here four years, and it was funny, I realized tonight when the mayor called upon me to do the pledge, that I did the pledge at my first meeting, so that was kind of funny, and I don't know why I remembered that, but it seems just like yesterday. And so, Vice Mayor Bell, I want to thank you for keeping my seat warm for the past two years. With honor and integrity and punctuality, and I know you and Richard will have a good time out here in the boondocks down in this seat. Now, I just wanted to reflect and thank Mayor Warren for the latitude that he's given me to serve this community over the last four years. I mean, just how different things were here four years ago, and I looked at the clock a minute ago, and realized we're going to be out of here before nine o'clock. And maybe that's a sign of progress when the meeting's in before nine, because I know our first year and a half here, we were here until 11 and later, sometimes more than once or twice a week, for weeks and weeks on end. So maybe short council meetings are one indicia of a well-run city that's really making progress. But I wanted to thank the mayor for his trust and confidence in me, and allowing me to bring forth the initiatives that he's allowed me to take the lead on and bring to this council, from charter review to moratoriums, to electrical utility accounts not being turned on, and everything else in between. And I know that the differences that he and I have have not been personal, they've been philosophical, philosophical, but in the big picture, I've always had respect for Mayor Warren, and his wise manner of delegating tasks and identifying who's best suited to take on which task. And to Councilman Porter, and Vice Mayor Bell, and the mayor, I look forward to working with all of you for at least two more years. It's been an honor and privilege to be here, and it's been certainly a whirlwind, but in retrospect, a very, very fast four years. So thank you, Mayor, and thank all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozner. And let me also echo a lot that Mr. Lozner has said. You know, I've been honored for the last four years, working with each and every one of you, and certainly for the ones that came on two years ago. I couldn't ask for a better vice mayor. I tell you, Linda is very, very special, and just have done an outstanding job representing the city in so many ways. And I tell you, I called at the last minute sometime, and said, could you take my place? And she's never said no. And we are, I think the community have been honored by your leadership and all that you've done for the people of Homestead. Councilman Lozner can't say enough. I know, put a lot on his shoulder, and again, someone that just don't say no. I mean, when I did the State of the City address and said we need a Northwest initiative to stop the blight and the deterioration, within 24 hours, he had a plan. So it just shows his commitment to this community, his longstanding relationship with, for the city, and his involvement. Councilwoman Wallman is another one that, I tell you, just extremely talented. And I know that as an administrator, to be an effective administrator, you must be an effective delegator. And I know these people up here, and I know where their hearts are, and Councilwoman Wallman has just shared her love and her commitment to this community, day in and day out. I just don't see how, she's like that energy bug, bug, you just keep going and going and going and going. And I want to thank you for your service to the people of Homestead, and- Homestead, and not to mention what Amanda Garner have done for our young people when I was elected a couple of years ago, and I was knocking on doors, the young folks are saying, well, what are you doing, Mayor, for the young people in the community? We want a community center, we, we want to be involved. And, and then talking to, um, the late B. Pesca, who said, you need to put together Mayor's Youth Council and get our young people involved, and I couldn't find a better leader than Amanda to make that happen, and she have done an outstanding job, um, not only with the Mayor's Youth Council, with the codes of this city, codes that have been in existence for 30, 40 years, she's made a difference. So I want to thank her for her leadership, and my good friend, Councilman Hodge, unbelievable effort with economic development, working with Rick Stouts, and, um, as he mentioned tonight, where's the Southwest Master Plan, because he want to see that through, and I want to thank him for his vision, and, and bringing economic development in City Homestead, and we're well on our way, and seeing the industrial and the commercial element of Homestead come to fruition in the months ahead. So we have some interesting, um, challenges ahead of us, but I think, um, we got the minds and the talent up here to make things happen, they've made things happen, so I don't get credit for all of this, folks, but when, only when things were bad, the mayor name is out there, but there's a lot of good stories to tell in four years, and, um, I say it's a good team here, the manager put a good team, and I don't think the community fully realized to get an A2 rating within a four years on the brink of bankruptcy, that says a lot about this community, and we couldn't do it without the community. Just a tremendous effort. And then to get the message last week about the defeasement of these bonds and further reduce people, uh, wastewater bill, that's, that's a tremendous, a tremendous job, job well done from all of us, so, um, it'd have been amazing, I've been blessed to serve this community for many, many years, and, um, hopefully I'll be blessed again on November 1st. Um, one item, um, if you have not heard Mr. Lozner and Mr. Hodge preach, you should have been at the St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church 100 Year Celebration, uh, we were fortunate to be there, and St. Paul is one of the historic churches in the community, and they celebrated a 100 year of service in the community, and I was glad that Mr. Lozner and Mr. Hodge was able to attend, it was a, it was a beautiful program. And let me also, again, um, just congratulate Councilwoman Roman, that I, I received a letter from the National Park Service, um, I read it today, and handed over the, because she deserved to announce it to the community, just an outstanding initiative, again, an initiative by this city council. Folks didn't think it would happen, but we on the national list for funding and technical assistance from the national level and the state level, so that project is going to happen, ladies and gentlemen, it's going to happen, and it's going to be a multi, multi-million dollar project coming to Homestead. Outstanding. That finally we'll get the connection between the two national parks, a tremendous, um, accomplishment, and when I look at it from a visionary point, to see the, the economic development opportunities as a result of this connection. So just a tremendous accomplishment by this, by this council. So again, thank all, thank all of you very much, thank you for your commitment, thank you for your, your daily involvement, what we do here for the people of Homestead. Thank you all very much, and that's all I have.
Mayor. I'm sorry, there's one more item, probably on the back page there, is the appointment to his.
Well, I have one appointment to the story. Mr. Randell Kaufman, appointment to the historic preservation board, do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion of Mr. Hodge, second letter, Vice Mayor. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Thank you all very much. Meeting is adjourned.